Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 7th Board of Trustees Meeting. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, Camille, would you please call the roll?
Pressky Lang.
Present.
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 Present, and good evening to everyone. You might see us in wearing our pink today in solidarity with the DPW who recognizes and acknowledges Breast Cancer Awareness Month every month, so thank you for that, Frank and DPW. We have no appointments or swearing ins today, so we do have two public hearings. The first one, the public hearing to consider proposed modifications to the village code related to short-term rentals. There has been some movement in terms of litigation in New York City, so we're keeping an eye on that before we make some decisions. And the second public hearing, so that one will remain open. So I'd like a motion to open the public hearing to consider a proposed Marble Dale Road building moratorium, and this is just so that everybody understands, just for new development over 10,000 square feet. So may I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So the public hearing is open. If you have anything that you'd like to bring forth or you'd like to weigh in regarding this moratorium, please come forward now. Anyone that's present in the building? Anyone on Zoom? David? Okay. So I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing to consider this moratorium.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So having said that, I'm going to actually move right to resolution number one and ask for a motion to authorize the adoption of the moratorium.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And just so that the public is aware, the reason why we've authorized a moratorium on any development on Marble Dale is because, as we mentioned at the last meeting, we are undergoing a comprehensive planning process, and we want to make sure that before any movement happens there, any new development, that we are working with the Comprehensive Planning Committee and the village residents to make sure that we're making decisions that are going to be in the best interest of the future of the village. So thank you, Board, for authorizing that. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 9th meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so we will move to resolutions. Number two, authorizing the closure of Warren Avenue for a Halloween party and parade by the Westchester Park Civic Association, so party time. It's party season for the holiday. May I have a motion to authorize that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and before we authorize the year-end budget and adjustments, David, would you talk a little bit about those, please?
Sure. So the next two resolutions, one is for adjustments, one's for modifications. These aren't actual, you know, actuarial terms. This is just something that I did just to try to make things a little bit more clear. What the adjustments is, is that obviously when you pass a budget, you have an equal budget of revenues and expenditures. Throughout the year, a lot of different things happen that kind of change that. One major thing that happens oftentimes is that we get grant revenue in, right? So when we get grant revenue in, that boosts up our revenues, so what we want to do is offset those revenues with the corresponding expenditure that's there. So obviously, our revenues, we were modifying our revenues to go up, but also our expenditures to go up. Another case is when there's chargebacks. So obviously, when the police and DPW do certain work and there's chargebacks, we don't have budget for those because we don't know if that's going to happen. So what happens is, so if the police do work, there's obviously an expense on that side, but there's a chargeback and corresponding revenue. So basically, what the adjustments is, is just to even out the budget throughout the whole year. The modifications is actually gets down in each individual line, right? So there's several different lines, several different departments, several different lines from materials and supplies and education, and you know, there's many different things. Some of those lines are overspent, some are underspent. So obviously, at the end of the year, what we do is, we cover the over-expended lines with the under-expended lines. So at the end of the year, this is pre-audit, but it does look like that, obviously, we've come out in the positive around, you know, $72,000, give or take, as of right now, pre-audit.
Great, thank you. Is there any, are there any questions from the Board for David? Okay, may I have a motion to authorize the adjustments and modifications?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much, and may I have a motion to authorize payment of the bills in the amount of $229,790.20.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. So that's going to take us to departmental reports, and I think we do have the Chief of Police here somewhere. He's hiding. Larry Rhoda. And I don't know if Eddie's coming up too, but...
Just me, uh, there.
Okay.
Good evening, Village Board.
Good evening.
Just want to start out with an announcement, excuse me. This October 17th, we're going to do our annual Pizza with Police. We'll be generating a social media post shortly, and we're going to do it this year in the Fisher Avenue Park from 4:30 to 6:30. So we'll post flyers throughout the community and also social media. It's a great night. Come out with the family, friends, and stop by and have a conversation with police. The fall's upon us now, and the leaves are coming down much sooner than expected, and I know DPW is going to be out with the leaves, collecting leaves, but we have to be cognizant of leaf piles blocking roadways and also fire hydrants. So don't do it yourself as a resident, but also if you notice a contractor doing it, please notify us so we can correct the issue. And a reminder, there is no gas-powered leaf blowing on Sundays as well in the village. Our traffic sensor project is going well. The equipment is starting to arrive daily. We met with the contractor today to walk the site specifically on Lake Avenue and Main, which is going to need a little bit more work than the other intersections, so, but everything is on track to start moving. We also are looking to move on the Winter Hill and Midland Project to finish that up with the sensors there and also the new traffic posts and lights. So that's very imminent. Let's see, what else do we have here? Okay, I was notified at the beginning of this month regarding an article published by Westchester Magazine of Best Places to Live in Westchester. And upon reading this article, it was clear there was erroneous numbers put in there reflecting negatively on Toccoho, to the point being where they published our crime rate as high as 24.7, which they wound up correcting it to 6.1, and they originally published our crime rate to 31.2% and then corrected it to 15.5. I made immediate contact with the editor, John Toriano, who advised the data was inputted incorrectly by a third-party vendor, and the third-party vendor that they use is bestplaces.net. So once they corrected the data online, they're going to issue a statement of correction in next month's issue. But also, even with the lower numbers, I wanted to let the residents know that oftentimes the village of Toccoho in the 10707 zip code is also mixed in with the city of Yonkers, and there's many parts of Yonkers across the Bronx River that have a Toccoho PO. So the crime rates are often mixed in with Toccoho's crime rates as well. So even though our numbers according to bestplaces.net is 6.1%, which is relatively good across Westchester County, it's actually quite lower than that. Also, if you go to the village website online under the police line in the website, and you can look under our reports and data, you'll see that our yearly crime numbers are actually very, very good, and they've just been published today for September's numbers. So if anyone wants to look online, it's, we're doing really well. Now for my crime tip of the month. So wireless doorbell video cameras and also floodlight cameras that are wireless are now able to be disabled by criminals using jamming devices. We started seeing this about a year ago, and now it's getting more popular. We haven't seen it exactly in Toccoho, but these criminals are buying these devices, which the average person cannot buy, and what they do is they place this device near the place they wish to burglarize or commit a crime, and it kills the Wi-Fi. So the way around that is, one, to let everyone know that your wireless doorbell is a safety net, but it's not security. It'll let you know who's coming and going, but if you want a doorbell that has live video, you're going to have to hardwire it with video wire connected to your Ring Home Hub. Same thing with the floodlights as well. So I just wanted to make that aware to our residents, said it's good to have the Ring or any other doorbell brand, but just be aware that wireless is not guaranteed, and it can go down. So overall, we appreciate the input of neighbors when they see something on the Ring going on or any type of those wireless doorbell systems. It's great. It's a great thing to have, but if you're looking to purchase another one, always try to go for the wired one because that's more solid and it's less of a chance of getting disabled. So overall, does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
I do want to thank my neighbor at the Westview for writing into Westchester Magazine. He alerted me also. He sent me a letter saying that he wrote to them to tell them that they published erroneous information, and he wrote them an extensive, strongly worded letter, I'll just say, and they responded. So I want to say thank you to Jerry Callejo, who is neighbor, longtime resident in Toccoho, and also a member of the Beautification Committee.
Yes, Jerry was surprised and very pleasantly surprised once they gave him the correct data. So thank you to that resident, and also thank you for anyone notifying us for any future data that they see as incorrect.
Yeah, and I do want to reiterate what the Chief said, that we are one of the top three safest neighborhoods in Westchester County, so that's important to note.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. May I have the Superintendent of DPW? Frank DiMarco.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hi, Chief.
Members of the Board. Just want to touch on some items tonight. This is leaf season. Leaf season is upon us. We will be sending out our leaf vacuum truck at the beginning of October 15th, and that's, that goes until December 1st, but we usually take that just a little further. But again, this is just our vacuum truck that circles around Toccoho, starts in one location until we get to the end of Toccoho, so there's no scheduled days that we're going to be coming by there. So if you call me to find out where we are, you could do that, and I'd try to give you the best information I can. Again, this is our vacuum truck, so if you're looking to put loose leaves out, you could put them in empty containers, biodegradable bags, but most important, that's a Thursday pickup for yard waste. Leaves are placed in a pile by curbside, and just to touch on what Larry said, please, not in front of fire hydrants. Keep our catch basins open and clear, and what I do ask is that neighbors contain and minimize the amount of piles that they have on their blocks, just so they're not taking up all the parking spaces, because as everybody knows, there's not that many parking spaces in Toccoho. No rocks, no logs, just leaves, just leaves. Paved roads. Recently, we just paved Park Avenue, which was a Con Edison gas upgrade. So they paved all of Park Avenue for us. We just completed McKinley Street, parts of Fulling, Highview Avenue, Lincoln Avenue, and Main Street Park is up and coming within the next two weeks. We're going to be paving that as well. DPW Day. We had DPW Day Saturday, and thank God, we had amazing weather. The sun was out. There were so many participants, so many people out, and they wanted to get out, and I assumed it was because it was DPW Day. But we had a great showing. We had library storytime. The Environmental Committee was there helping out. Beautification Committee was there as well. Sustainable Westchester Con Edison. The men of DPW were just showcasing their equipment and all their trucks, and kids and parents just loved to sit in them and beep the horns, of course. But most importantly, they showcased what they do on a daily basis throughout the entire year, which I'm very proud of. And that's it. We're going to go on to Breast Cancer Awareness Month, of course. You brought that to our attention. This is our 12th year that DPW has been sponsoring Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Obviously, it's every October, and we all know somebody, we've all touched somebody in our lives at some point that have been diagnosed with breast cancer awareness. So when you see the men and hopefully someday women of DPW driving by or doing their job, you know, just give them a thumbs up and just thank them for supporting breast cancer awareness. That's all I have. Any questions?
Frank, I actually have a question. So I totally love the vacuum, the leaf vacuum machine. That's like super fun. Where do the leaves go?
The leaves, the leaves go to the compost site that gets composted.
Do you have any sense of like how, like by volume, how much leaves are collected across the village?
Like 400 tons.
Wow.
Quite a bit.
That's cool.
Yes, all leaves go to the compost site that get composted.
That's cool.
That's it.
Anything else? Anyone else? Thanks, thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
Swadish, Library Director. Swadish Pasananda.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
The Board of Trustees and our wonderful Toccoho community. I just want to say that last month I mentioned that New York State Construction Grant to upgrade our HVAC system was applied in the amount of $108,054, and that grant got approved from the library system. And hopefully, we will receive the money in a couple of months. So I wanted David to let him know. The other thing, for month of October, we changed our operation at the community center. So Monday, we open 11 to 8, Tuesday 10 to 5, Wednesday 10 to 1:30, and Thursday 11:30 to 5, Friday 10 to 3, and we are closed on Saturday. And as usual, we have a special Halloween craft for children tomorrow at 3:30 PM for ages 4 to 10, and our Tuesday Storytime, Friday Storytime, and special bilingual Storytime on Friday, October 25th at 11:00 AM. And for teens, we have Wednesday, October 30th, 30th at 6:00 PM Dungeons and Dragon. We also have wonderful ESL classes, which is always packed. We get at least 14 to 15 people. We're also offering one-on-one tech help, which is on Thursday, October 3rd at 2:00 PM, and mystery book club is going to be on Wednesday, October 23rd at 6:30 PM, and the copies of books are available at the library. An ongoing program, Tai Chi, meditation, chair yoga, art classes, knitting club, and martial arts. Also, I want to let you, the community, know the friends of the library have access to free museum passes, so you have to be resident of Toccoho or be a friend of the Toccoho Library, and we have wonderful list of museum passes. We just, friends, just added 9/11 Memorial and Museum, Museum of Natural History, Bruce Museum, Franklin D. Roosevelt Presidential Library and Museum, Guggenheim, Hudson River, Intrepid, A R C and Space Museum, Stanford Museum and Nature Center, and Westchester Children's Museum. Also, Toccoho Library, we are also holding a winter coat and accessory drive from October 1st to October 21st, and you can donate your new and gently-used winter coats, adults, children, new hats, gloves, mittens, scarves, socks, and we are doing this program in collaboration with Westchester Library System and United Way.
Nice.
If anybody has any question, give us a call, 914-961-2121.
Thank you, Swadish.
Any question?
And just to let everybody know that I know that you're anxiously awaiting the reopening of the library. We are very close to there, but not quite. There's a few things that need to be worked out, so within the next six weeks maybe, just look out for that. Thanks, Swadish.
Thank you, everybody.
Do you have anything, Camille? Gary? David? Not yet. I will call, I'll call. So I'll move on to some dates that you guys should remember. The Creepy Candy Crawl, October 26th at Main Street. Deputy Mayor will give you all the details on that, I'm sure. And also, just keep in mind that the next meeting is the day before Election Day, November 4th, at 7:00 PM is the next Village Board meeting. November 5th is Election Day. Keep in mind that early voting begins October 26th through November 3rd. You can vote early at the Eastchester Library at 11 Oak Ridge Place, and you're going to be voting on that day for the president's, the president, Congress, Senate, Assembly, and your local elections. So please get out and vote. It's not just your duty, it should also be your honor to do so. And that'll take us to the Board of Trustee member reports. trustee Lang.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to start by thanking the hard-working members of the DPW for a wonderful event. You know, we could sit here and thank Frank, you know, all night, but as he said before, he's only as good as the men and maybe someday the women that he has working for him. So thanks to all of the guys who gave up this Saturday to show Toccoho what the DPW is made of. Thank you very much. Beautification continues their hard work. They had a table set up this past weekend for DPW Day, where they sold raffles, pumpkins. So thank you to all the members of Beautification for continuing to keep Tocco beautiful year after year. Thank you very much. The Tocco Community Center, quite a couple of things going on there this month. On Friday, the 18th at 10:00 AM, they will be offering free flu vac, free flu vaccines, pardon me, available for 19 and over, no appointment necessary. I believe that's being provided by New York Presbyterian, so thank you to them. Saturday, the 19th, it's going to be Seniors Bingo Night, and that's going to be from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM. That should be fun there. Tuesday, the 22nd, from 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, Lifeline Screening will be conducting screenings. Lifeline Screening of America will be providing screenings to any residents from the village. Currently, the gym is open Wednesdays from 2:00 to 4:00 PM for open gym, where you can play, watch TV, or even study. They have kind of some private little study areas where the kids can go and study if they wish. Thank you to John Galuzzi for providing me with that information. I would like to remind everyone in the village that we recently received information on sustainable Westchester that it's time-sensitive, so if you wish to make any changes, you must do so by October 20th. And lastly, Happy Halloween, and I encourage everyone to get out and vote this Election Day, November 5th. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. trustee Gachion.
Thank you, Mayor. Start with the History Committee. As you know, the History Committee meets here at Village Hall on Wednesdays from 9:30 to 12:30, and Nick Zanzano and the crew have been very busy. They have facilitated the acquisition of original piece of Toccoho marble that's almost as big as the dais. It was the cover of, actually, Frank, I think it's at DPW right now. It's a beautiful piece that was the top of a fireplace, and I think they're looking for a place to house that thing here at Village Hall, so we'll see. But it's beautiful. I can't wait till y'all kind of get a chance to enjoy this. In conjunction with the Eastchester Historical Society, on September 28th, they had the Francis Scott Key Dinner. Francis Scott Key himself was there. He did a good job answering some of our questions about the time period and the Star Spangled Banner and whatnot. Moving on to veterans. Gold Star Mothers and Families Day was September 29th. We memorialized the Gold Star mothers and families and, you know, their lost loved ones then up on White Plains Road at the monument there, and the county had their memorial on the 27th at Kentsa Go Dam. And on September 25th, we had Veteran Services Job Fair at the Yonkers Extension Center of Westchester Community College. Very well attended, so I thank everyone that showed up there. We know that it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, but it's also Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so to survivors and their loved ones, I just want you to remember that you are not alone. And it's also Italian-American Heritage Month, so saluti di tutti to all of my paisans. Have a great month. Take care.
Thank you, trustee Gachion. trustee Engelbert.
Okay, awesome. Okay, so we'll start with Eastchester Union Free School District. October, lots of holidays this month. All of them are very important and valid, but certainly light a candle for all those parents out there in the district with those days off. But more seriously, tomorrow night, 7:30 PM, there is a school board meeting in the EHS Library, and it'll also be livestreamed, so if you go to the district website, you can get access to that. Eastchester's on the hunt for a new superintendent. Competitive business, superintendencies days, and they've contracted with an external search firm to help with that process. If you are in the district, please respond to any survey requests and attend an upcoming forum about the superintendent on October 23rd. That's October 23rd at 6:30 PM. In so many ways, the superintendent sets the tone and direction of the district, and by extension, really drives what education looks like for our children. This position matters in real ways, so please make sure that your voice is heard as the district makes this all-important decision this year. Okay, Tocco Public Library, the mayor did steal some of my report, but you know, who's counting kind of on that? Last bits and bobs of the library renovation are now being completed, and everyone knows who's done. Home renovation is always these last bits and bobs that seem to take the longest in the process. So the village administration and the library board are working closely to iron out when exactly that reopening is going to happen. It is likely to have a soft launch. In the tech world, that's when we kind of test it, see how things going to go, so hopefully that goes kind of well. If you want to peek in the windows, but don't do that, the Chief is still here, because that's like probably against the law in some kind of way. You shouldn't do that, but if you were to do that, you would see that many of the books have been reshelled and that furniture has been delivered, and it's looking pretty schnazzy kind of in the library. While it doesn't feel the same without Ms. Elaine, the library is conducting a search for a new librarian and hope to have someone in place soon. And if you haven't seen The Let's Pretend with Ms. Nora, it is so awesome and so fun and cheerful and joyful. I was lucky to see her in action just recently, and I only see her in action, I actually see Eddie Spaghetti at that session as well. So it was like kind of awesome sauce, kind of on a whole, a whole new level. Okay, and last but not least is the TESC Committee or the Tocco Environmental and Sustainability Committee. The community garden is now near to complete. It's on Pleasant Avenue across from the Assumption Church. Certainly stay tuned for additional information about how to secure a spot. Thank you to the DPW for kind of helping that get started, but we're all looking forward to some really exciting gardening adventures this spring. And another thing you shouldn't do, but I went by there today and I thought about like hopping the fence and grabbing one of those last, last tomatoes, but I didn't do that, Chief, because that would be wrong to jump the fence. But well done for TESC for getting that done. It's a really wonderful addition to the community. That's it for me.
Very cool. Thank you. Deputy Mayor, Cronin? It's hard act to follow.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. We'll start with the seniors. The Tocco seniors will host their annual bingo night, as my colleague mentioned before, on Saturday, October 19th. The doors actually open at 4:00 PM and the games begin at 5:00. Tickets are $50, and I believe that gets you three like cards. This is the Tocco seniors' main fundraiser, and it's a really good time, so if you have some time, come on out. I believe that it is $50, and you can buy tickets on the Senior Citizens Council's website at SCC70.org. I would like to give a huge congratulations to Nancy Height Norde, who is here tonight. She has been selected as to be part of this year's Senior Citizen Hall of Fame in Westchester County. Nancy gives so much of herself to this community and to Westchester County Foundation for the Aging. She will be honored with other inductees on Friday, December 6th, at the Westchester Marriott, and I will be in attendance, as many of us will be. Congratulations, Nancy. It is so well-deserved, and thank you for all that you do. Nancy. It is so well deserved, and thank you for all that you do. I actually understand that Takahoe native Vito Pinto has also been selected as an inductee. So congratulations to Vito. Takahoe is well represented this year. So thank you also for all that you do. We have amazing seniors in this community, and this is just one way to highlight that and say thank you for all that they give. So just sometimes I like to spotlight some senior programs. Today's program is Dorot, D-O-R-O-T. And this is a nonprofit organization addressing the challenges of the aging population. They serve a diverse range of programs, and they deliver these programs through intergenerational connections with volunteers. So some of the things that they are doing right now is like technology coaching, which is so important. My mother often needs this and calls me and is like, how do I work this computer? So this is, if you have those questions and you don't have somebody to call, this is a great connection. They also need volunteers. So if you are somebody who has a little time on your hands and want to work intergenerationally, Dorot, D-O-R-O-T, I just posted some information about it on my Facebook page, my trustee page, and you can look at their website. Moving on to the Zoning Board of Appeals, their public meeting will be Wednesday, the 9th, that's two days from today, at 7:30. The work session is right before at 7 o'clock. There are a few items on the agenda. 174 Marble Dale Road is adjourned. This was to convert business into residential units. 137 Columbus Avenue is a return, and this is to continue operating an existing automotive repair shop on Columbus Avenue. And then 20 Underhill Street, and this is a return. This is to convert a basement into a livable space. And then 116 Bella Vista is an area variance, expanding the driveway and the retaining wall. The Planning Board is Tuesday, October 15th at 7:00 PM, and their work session was last week. They have a few items. 170 Marble Dale Road, which is an amendment to a site plan, this is a return. 137 Columbus Avenue is an adjournment, and 69 Main Street, which is a new skincare business. So that's exciting. And welcome to them with, when they get, if they, when they get here. I just want to talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan. So we just passed this moratorium this earlier in the meeting. And so I wanted to give everybody a little update about the comprehensive plan. We talk a lot about it, but you know, it's always nice to know what's going on. So the comprehensive planning people, the firm that the committee chose, came here last month, and they met with like important stakeholders, committee chairs and other people who, to give insight and input. They walked around the village. They did like a geographical survey, and then they've been doing some research. They're working on a survey now for residents, and that will go out to you soon. And we hope that you will respond. We'd like to get as many responses as possible. The more robust the sample, the more information we get, and the better it is, right? So this is your opportunity to do this survey to the upcoming focus groups. This is going to be your opportunity to kind of drive the future of this village. And so we really want to hear from you. I will continue to tell you about it, maybe even haunt you about it, so that you really do participate and let us know what you see the future of this village. So everyone's favorite, or at least my favorite, is the Candy Crawl. The Creepy Candy Crawl is October 26th. This year, we're going a little longer, so it's from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. We have many, many vendors confirmed. And I just want everyone to know that this is a completely free event. So we work on the generosity of the vendors that come. A lot of them are businesses, and a lot of them are just private people who love Halloween a lot and set up tables. We do have a sponsor this year, New York Presbyterian, and thank you to them for their generosity. They're really looking out for the community. But we do have a lot of great businesses that come, and they set up, and they have treats and giveaways and arts and crafts and all different kinds of things. But the number one thing, of course, is the candy. So this is my annual plea. Takahoe, we need your help. I need candy donations. Like I said, we give away about 50,000 pieces of candy. I am not being exaggeratory. And we do this based on donations. So if you have it in your heart and you'd like to donate, you can, I can pick it up from you. All you have to do is send me an email or a text message, or contact me via my Facebook or Instagram pages. Or you can bring it here. And the lovely people here at Village Hall, the staff does hold on to it for me. And this is very important. So if you have interest and opportunity, please drop off some candy or call me and I'll come get it. We also need volunteers. This is a great volunteer opportunity for young people. So if you have people who are 11, 12, or ages and up, who can work, who are artsy, who are creative or crafty, this is a great opportunity. Or if they just want to help set up and break down, let me know. Give me a ring, and I will put them to work. It's a good opportunity to get some community service. All right. The mayor spoke about Election Day. I just want to remind you two things. The deadline to request an absentee ballot is October 26th, and it's also the deadline to register to vote. So if you know a young person or somebody who's recently moved here who isn't registered to vote, please talk to them about registering to vote. It's very important. Ballots must be returned by November 5th. And you can find more information about voting at the Westchester Board of Elections website. On a more somber note, this weekend, we, and actually celebratory too, this weekend, Jewish Americans celebrated Rosh Hashanah, which is a time of reflection, renewal, and hope. And they are called to a collective, we are called to a collective compassion and understanding. I was lucky enough to attend Habad services in Eastchester with my family, where the message was about developing a sense of perspective and understanding for those around you and your neighbors. As we mark the one-year anniversary of October 7th, we are reminded of the profound loss of that day and the deep wounds left in many communities in its wake. The devastation has unfolded since that day, serves as a somber reminder of the fragility of the peace in our whole world. As we reflect on the lives lost, our hearts ache, not only for those who perished, but also for the ongoing suffering, for the countless families caught in the crossfire of this conflict. It is essential that we strive for a world where dialogue prevails over division and where our shared humanity is honored for all. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Deputy Mayor. No truer words have been spoken tonight. Just want to highlight, last year, for those of you who remember, we honored then Chief Costanzo with the Marble Award. This year, we had some nominations, and the board met on our work session night and voted to decide who the honoree for this year would be. We will name that person in November, because we do have Trustee Gachion working diligently on that award. He did a wonderful job last year. So what happens when you do a good job? You just get it again. So thank you, Trustee, for working on that. So we will name the honoree then. So please don't miss it. Come and honor your neighbor alongside us. I also want to thank the Takahoe Challenge Committee, led by Renee Howell, who had 679 people participate this year compared to last year's 594. So the road race here is really growing. And the proceeds next month will be presented to the library, which we've designated already as the person, the entity that would receive the proceeds. So come back next month. We have Marble Award. We have proceed announcements. We have lots of good stuff happening. Next, in two days, October 9th, we will be having the ribbon cutting ceremony for Bahama Taco. So for those of you who continue to harass me, asking me when it's opening, please let everyone know it is on October 9th at 5:00 PM. If you'd like to come and share in that ceremony, they will be serving some light bites afterwards. You can taste what they're cooking up at the Bahama Taco. And I also want to alert everyone and, I guess, educate the public that the municipalities in Takahoe, Bronxville, and Eastchester do not technically oversee the fire department. I got a couple of calls asking me about the budget for the fire department. They have their own Board of Commissioners. So if you're interested in going and asking why the budget is, you know, they're proposing to increase it by 14%, you need to go to that meeting. Because the board here doesn't set those budgets. We set our budget. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. You can find the information for their meetings on, if you look, you want to come up and tell us?
Anthony, if you are in a vivid place. Yeah, for that, it's efd.com. The Board of Fire Commissioners, everything is, yeah, I think they have.
EFD, eastchesterfiredepartment.com.
Yeah, everything is there. I think they have a work session on the 16th.
So if you go on that, on the website, you can find that information. Yeah, so I just want to reiterate, this board does not oversee that process, nor do we set the budget for the fire department. All right, so that will take us to this opportunity to address the board. And you can come forward. I know you've been waiting very patiently. Sorry.
I apologize. I thought we had called to be placed on the agenda. That's okay. Elizabeth O'Loughlin, I'm a member of the Takahoe Beautification. Fundraising letter went out earlier in the year to property and business owners, and all donations were acknowledged individually. All chrysanthemums were planted in front of the Village Hall and the Crestwood area. Our pumpkin sale and decorating was extremely successful. Thank you to DPW for allowing us to participate at your event. It was a great day. Our next event will be Pictures with Santa on December 7th. Winter Fest is that day also, and there will be more advertising in the next few weeks for this festive day. We continue to work on various areas and hope to have some follow-up on the Garrett Park sign and suggest converting the signs to plaques at the community center. Beautification would be willing to pay for these flat plaques. Once again, we thank the Village Board and the Department of Public Works for your continued support. It is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Betty, can I just say that the chrysanthemums are still glorious. They really are stunning. I don't know where they come from, but they are just something else.
Nice. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
Hello, everyone. Jeff Zuckerman, 24 Bronx Street. I didn't know anything about the fire department was going to call up tonight, but it's a pet peeve of mine, so I'm going to inform the community about exactly how this works. It's just a quirk of New York State that, for whatever reason, there's only five people in the entire town of Eastchester who determine what the budget is for the Eastchester Fire Department. Tony Colavita doesn't have any say over it. You don't have any say over it. Mary Marvin in Bronxville has no say over it. Five people. They could raise the budget, what, 14%? They could raise it 100%. There's nothing anyone in the entire town of Eastchester can do about it. It's a closed session. There's five people. You can vote for them on the second Tuesday in December, when nobody knows there's an election, nobody cares to run. And that's it. And nobody, if you tell people this from another community, where it doesn't apply to all places in New York State. It's small villages like us. That's the way it works, and small towns. And it's just, it's such a travesty, I can't even begin to tell you. They want new this, new that. They want to give big raises. We have an incredibly high-paid fire department, as you could imagine, with incredible benefits. And I'm a union guy, and I love the union, but it's so out of line. It's so out of hand. And it's, next time, I'll tell you how I really feel.
Anyone else would like to address the board? No? Anyone on Zoom? No? Okay. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak? If they're not saying anything to you, then I'm assuming no. Okay. So having said that, I will move to close the meeting. It just feels kind of like we should be doing something else, right? Do you guys just don't want, you want to hang out or something? We're going to go for tacos. Thank you very much. Takahoe, we will, yes, did somebody say something? No. Okay, so I'll move to close the meeting. Have a good night, Takahoe. See you in November, November 4th.